Okay, welcome, everybody. I am calling to order the Special Board of Education meeting. It is Thursday, May 12, 2022. It is 6:10. We are in the Nashua North Boardroom. Ms. Raymond, can you please call roll?
Sure. Mr. Claffey?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
President.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Heather Raymond's here. Ms. Brown, here. We also have Dr. McKinney, Mr. Parker, Mr. Sahu, and Mr. Rogers.
Welcome, everybody. So we are gathered here tonight to discuss the GPA from the task force that we wanted to put a special meeting aside to. There are two things that I want to do before we start, and that is, I know we have some students here who want to speak, so I would actually be looking for a motion to allow for public comment.
So moved. One second.
Thank you.
Give me just one second to write it down.
Yeah.
Because I don't have a sheet. Okay, I'm ready.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We don't have a sign-up sheet for you guys, so when you come up here, because we have three, when you come up here, you don't need to state your addresses, you're students, so you just need to state your name. And that is the... Oh, okay.
Well, I think-
We can put it, we're putting a sheet up, but you don't have to put your addresses on. All of your information is protected, so we just have to have your name.
That's good, so I don't have to try and spell. Yes. It's a good plan.
Yeah. Okay, so, beginning this discussion on GPA, just to give you a little bit of background information, we have, we had a task force working on this for a while now, and we were opening this up for more discussion. And I was wondering if I see Dr. McKinney up there. I'm going to wait for him.
So we have October's information that we've brought forward-
Yep.
And then also February?
Yeah. We just keep referencing the same, the same report that was created by the task force, and then the numbers that were presented just a little bit ago. But I will wait for Dr. McKinney to give us an overview. I know we've, just a summary of what the findings were.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Can I publicly thank Ms. Kinsella for, at 4:18 PM, getting my message and printing this stuff out for me, because I couldn't get my printer to work? So, thank you very much, Ms. Kinsella, for printing it for me, and then everybody else here in the circle, too.
Yes.
She's very efficient, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't have... Where'd it go? Thank you, Dr. McKinney. So we'll just have you speak a little bit to what, I know we've already talked about this, but just a brief summary on what the task force is. Okay. Perfect. The floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. So how we got here, on April 9, 2019, a, the board made a motion for a task force to be convened to look into the GPA system, whether it should be changed or not, and make recommendations back to the board. And then, of course, the pandemic happened somewhere in between there. So back in October, we issued a report of findings. There's a copy there, a condensed version. And then in February, a memo was provided to the board with the recommendations, and then I believe the board, at the time, decided to move the meeting to this date here. So in the end, the summary of all that work, and I certainly want to thank the students, the staff, the teachers, the parent reps, both in the district and some who have moved on, who participated in the task force, made four general recommendations. So one is to continue with the practice that's currently in place for all current high school students until the graduating class of 2025. And then, beginning with the class of '26, implement a new system. And then the new system, the two other things would be revisit the GPA scale to align with competencies. So there's a memo that was issued on February 18, that basically an A+ is worth a 4.0, an A is worth a 3.75, and all the way down. If you look in some of the materials, there's a weighted and unweighted scale, depending on the letter grade and the course, the level of the course that students are taking. And then the last recommendation is to use a combination of GPA and a number of credits to identify diploma with distinct types. So a Latin system, and it's outlined there, all 30 credits, based on the GPA, going from a cum laude, a magna cum laude, to a summa cum laude system, based on the GPA of those 30 credits. So, I'm sorry, that's a short version, but it's synthesizing, it comes down to those four things.
So I know one of the, the main questions that we, that we walked away from the last couple of meetings has been, is the concern with how these changes would possibly affect the college admissions process? And I was hoping you could speak to that.
So, two things. We had a parent and a college who worked at a college in New Hampshire, in the admissions department, who was a part of the task force. And I believe the student reps and the, the young students here who are here to speak to it, basically, a lot of the higher ed institutions, we provide class rank and GPA information, but they either don't always count it in their admissions process, or they do their own calculations in lieu of that. So, the recommendation from the committee was, you know, based on that, and includes those four things. Certainly, some of the students that are here and others could speak to that, but, again, from the college rep that was on the task force, a lot of places, and Mr. Parker's, numerous years as a high school principal, he could speak to that as well, if he liked.
Thank you. I'll have Mr. Parker go, just to speak to the administrative end of things first, if you don't mind.
Yes, I was very excited about this whole process. My last year as principal, we did away with weighted GPA, beginning with the incoming freshman class. And the people who came to me promoting this was my guidance department. Said it does more harm than good. It naturally separates kids unnecessarily. It adds unduly to stress, right? And it makes a lot of kids take classes they really don't want to take. And we canvassed about 50 or 60 universities. Like Nashua, we sent kids all over the world to study in community colleges, military colleges, Ivy League, Canada, England. And the overwhelming majority said they recalculate anyway, because an A for you means something different in another part of the country, or in another town, what they promote. And we also, well, we never had A+. You know, A was sufficient. And so, and it was successful. It was successful, and so, but it was an administrative decision that our guidance department just didn't see the need for.
Yes. Mr. Sahu?
Yeah. Sorry about that. And, right, and additionally, in the past few meetings where this has been brought up and there has been little discussion on it, one of the main concerns that I've heard from the board, and boards prior, has been, by doing away with class rank, will that negatively affect our stu-, put the Nashua School District students at a disadvantage in the college admissions process? And just the answer to that is no. One of the many little packets I've so kindly provided the board is something called the Common Data Set. And I just have the definition of the Common Data Set up on my laptop, just so I do it justice. And essentially, for every, for every college, the Common Data Set kind of compiles the most important facts, figures about a college's standardized admissions format, and every college's Common Data Set's around 30 pages. I have around three tailored to a few certain colleges with figures that are relevant to us. And in every single packet, you're going to see there's a highlighted portion, and in this table, you're going to see all of the different factors that colleges consider in their admissions process, or don't consider at all. And in one of them, we have academic GPA and class rank specifically. And in every packet, you're going to see class rank highlighted, and you're going to see how every college on its spectrum of usefulness it is. And I have a variety of colleges here. We have numer-, I've provided Keene State College, Plymouth State, as well as UNH, but I also have out of some other state universities, such as UT Austin, University of Michigan. I also have some private institutions, such as Northeastern University, as well as Harvard. And so, just going across the spectrum. And to address the concern of military academies, at 11:00 AM today, emailed the board interactions with admissions officers in the military academies, from West Point to Merchant Marine, to a few others, all just to emphasize the point that by doing away with class rank now, or just ever, will not, like, will not put any of our Nashua School District students at a disadvantage. So that's like why I printed so much for you guys, just to prove the point.
I appreciate that. Yeah, all of the things that I read was, the more, most of the private elite high schools in the nation are going to this system. They don't, they don't do class rank, and they, they have this GPA set up, so. And most col-, most high schools that have large graduating classes don't have like the top 100. They just group them together like this, which I thought was neat, and I, I just, I think it's neat. Ms. Johnson had a question.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I want to go back on the survey results. I just, does anybody remember how many people answered the surveys? It says 50%. 50% of what? 76%. So I'm just wondering if we have the true numbers, did 100 people?
Can you, can you let me know what page you're speaking to, or what's?
I'm on page, which email? Okay.
It wasn't here. Did you get this? It's the same that we got back in October. Do you want to pass that down? Did you get this?
I have that.
Okay.
But I'm looking to see, it says percentages. I'm looking to see the numbers of how many people answered the survey. Let me go back into here. In the meantime...
I feel like we, we answered this before. It's somewhere in here.
Could've.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Claffey?
The, the survey results that we were provided with this afternoon? If I'm reading this correct, it looks like about 42 parents responded. Does that sound right?
So 42?
41 to 42.
Yeah, so I, the, the top of each question, it says how many people answered it. So out of a, a total of five, looks like about 542 answered.
542.
So the old one. It's from October.
Based on the information, I'm looking at my packet. I'm not sure which one you're looking at, but there were over 1,600 students who responded to the survey. There were over 42 parent and community members that responded to the survey, and over 214 high school teachers and staff.
Okay. So if it's an email, I did not see it, and the only thing I'm doing is going off of this packet that we just got.
So that information was from a meeting back in October of 2021. And after I had called Tara this afternoon, because I was trying to print and I was having some problems, she went ahead and re emailed it out to all of us, so that we would all have it on our-
It's all information we've already had.
Little iPads. And then she printed a couple pages, a couple copies. Do you have two?
Yeah, I'm hoarding them.
Oh, okay. So that we could all have it to look at again if we needed it tactile?
Yep.
Because she knows me.
Okay, I'll have to go over this, because I did not get a chance to read this today. I was, a couple of meetings this afternoon. Okay. So what I'm reading here, with the handouts that we got, the highlighted, class rank, which is considered in some of the schools, right? And some weren't. So on four of them, four schools consider, three don't consider class rank, as I walk through. So back in October, when we were going to talk about this, I made a couple of phone calls myself to find out what colleges and universities would be looking at class rank. So I've got to try to, I know that-
Can I just click, can I just clarify the definition of class rank? So you're, you're doing like valedictorian, salutatorian, and then a numbered rank after, not the class ranking system, which is the Latin system, which is a class ranking system, it's just not numerical?
Well, I called, let's see, I called UNH back then. They said that they look at GPA and course load, not so much class rank. Okay, that was UNH. So they can look at it. Harvard looks at GPA and class rank. SNHU, class rank. Piece of applicate, GPA. I'm trying to read my scribbled notes. I knew this a little bit better back in October than I do now. University of South Carolina, I believe this is, class, GPA and class rank. So I just didn't stay in New England. I kind of traveled around also. I mean, because our students don't all stay here, they like to travel around. So I guess Brandeis, GPA, class rank. So that's one of our, you know, Ivy Leagues, almost, you know, Brandeises. That's not one that you sneeze about, that's over here. University of Florida, GPA helps, let's see, not part of holistic views, but they do look at GPA and class ranks. My concern here is, is that what about the kids, the students, who wants to still be in this piece? If we take it away from everybody, are we, are we lowering the bar again on students? Are we not keeping the bar high enough? Because that's what it seems we do here in education. We don't have kids so much to excel. We take it away, and then we expect. I want to see that the kids, that if they have to have the class rank in the GPA, that they're striving for that. So, I mean, I think it's a toss-up here, half do and half don't. So I, you know, my schools are pretty much at the same league as, as yours are, and so, so how do we balance this? How do we balance this? What about the families and the kids who want to still stay with the class rank and GPA? I wish we had more people here. I wish we had people here from the community to give us their opinion. I mean, it's great for us to try to do what's right, but I'd like to hear other opinions, and I really, you know, trying to go back and see exactly the number of people who did take this, the survey, and I'm going to check, I'm going to continue to look. Thank you.
So I see, I saw Mr. Claffey's hand first. I don't know, does everybody have their hand up? Okay.
I just wanted to clarify that the recommendation from the district was not to eliminate GPA. It was to unweight the GPA, to change the weight. So an A is still anywhere from a 3.5 to a 4.0, a B is from a 2.75 to 3.25, C, 2.0 to 2.75, D is a 1.0, and if F is no credit, is zero points. So I just wanted to be clear, for the community and anyone watching, that this is not elimination
Right.
Of grading, of a grade scale.
Mr. Claffey? And then I'll go to the students.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that if you look at this wonderful information we were given tonight, that rigor is important to a lot of these colleges, very important to important rigor is. So I don't think, I think students are going to want to challenge, and then GPA is going to matter, too. Matters these colleges, and so we're not proposing eliminating those two, which seem to be more important to the colleges we've given us. Second thing I want to say is, I spoke with Ms. Kuchu, the head of guidance, this week in person, and back in February, when this was, I think, discussed, or at least on the agenda, she's all for this. She doesn't have any reservations, and I think the head of guidance, who's been in that position for some time, I trust her, I've known her for 20 years, I think if she thought that this was going to put our students at a disadvantage, she wouldn't support it. She does, without hesitation, without reservation. Thank you.
You guys can go ahead. Mr. Sahu? Sahu, sorry.
No worries.
I'm writing your first and last name.
That's all right, good. And, yeah, to your point, Ms. Johnson, we are, I forget who said it earlier, but we are getting, we are trying, the, what the task force has proposed in their recommendation isn't to do away with a ranking system entirely. What we have instead is the Latin honor system, to give students a distinction. So you said earlier, oh, are we lowering our standards in the Nashua School District by getting rid of this numerical ranking system? And I wouldn't support, and I don't think anyone on this board would support anything that would lower the standards of the Nashua School District. What we're doing is, we are providing an alternative that numerous other districts around us and across the country have, and colleges have this, too, in higher education. What this, what you'll probably hear from the students tonight, and what you've heard from the students earlier, and what you've been hearing from the students and teachers and everyone from, for years now, is the concern with our current class rank system and the negative effects that it's having on our student body. If you look at the data, I don't have the exact statistic right in front of me, but the amount of people who submitted into these surveys that said that class rank is directly causing their peers to commit academic dishonesty, that is disgusting, to say the least. And if we have this better system, which will do away, which in theory will do away some of the negative effects of class rank, such as the toxic competitive cutthroatness of just trying to reach a number, instead of, right here, the alternative is, you still strive for your personal academic excellence to achieve this tiered weight, like this tiered diploma. You know, so just because there's not a number anymore, doesn't mean that I'm going to flunk all of my colleges. I still have something to work for. I can work for summa cum laude and try to get that 3.75 and above GPA, unweighted, which is very hard, to say the least. You have to get nothing lower than an A in all of your high school career. I think that this is definitely motivating. I think this is challenging. And all students who are able to obtain these, these three proposed honors that the task force has for us today, those students are amazing. And we would not be reducing the quality of our students in the Nashua School District at all by doing this, by doing this now, by doing this in four years from now.
And I just want to add on to, I think we, we like class rank, because there are people who strive to be valedictorian, which means that there are two people in the entire graduating class that get to walk away with a label. Where when we go into the Latin system, we open up the opportunity for more students to walk away from high school, saying, you know, I graduated magna cum laude. And it gives them that, that label that they've been striving for, to quantify how much work they put into their academic career. So instead of, you know, you're either valedictorian or you're not. It's, it just gives them a way to define themselves without saying, I was third, I was fourth, because all you're saying is, I wasn't valedictorian. So it gives them the opportunity to better define themselves, if they want to define themselves, based on their grades and their academics. And I think it opens up more opportunities for more students to have that positive graduation tassel, literally. No, ropes, right? You guys do ropes? Oh, maybe we can start doing ropes now?
Yeah.
The ropes, you know, if you're magna cum laude, and you get different-
We do do ropes.
So I know we have the top 10. Well, it's the top 10, right? Is it everybody? This was not, I was not one of those students. I could have been. I didn't want to. All right.
I have, my turn.
Actually, Mr. Rogers has-
Okay, so one more thing. The, we can't forget that like the job of the Nashua School District is to develop like the student as a whole person, and if there's slightly less, a 3.75 is so really hard, but slightly less stress on grades, then a student will have more opportunity to focus on extracurriculars and other things that develop them as a person.
Right. Ms. Raymond? No, thank you. I just wanted to have a couple of things. One was, it's been 20-something years since I was in high school, and I remember what class rank I was, and how important that was at the time, and how it has had literally no effect on the rest of my life. Because by the time the class rank is finished, right, if you're competing to be in the top, like, say, three, by the time that they calculate that, you've already been accepted to your college, like your colleges, hopefully, and you've already said where you're going to go, or decided on trade school, or decided on those other things. But if we're talking about top 10, top three, which is really the competition, that's not decided until a few weeks before graduation, because you have to get that last semester's grades in, right? Because it's really cutthroat. And I can say that it has had no impact on my life at all, as important as I thought it was at 17. So, you know, it is what it is, and I'm willing to entertain the idea that that might not be the same for everyone, but, you know, I was talking to my husband about this earlier, and same thing for him. You know, he'd already gotten into the college he wanted, he already had his career path mapped out, you know, we're well on our way to middle age and our chosen career path, so yay. So I, I hear what they're saying. I'd like the revising the GPA scale and aligning it with competencies. I think that's something that has been missing in our competency grading, and this just kind of gets everything together and makes it aligned, and makes it so everybody understands it. And lastly, I just wanted to say, before we make any kind of motions, or get really deep into the weeds of, of what we want to do, I'd really like to hear from, it looks like all students who are here. So, Dr., a teacher? Yay, a teacher! Very youthful. So, Dr. McKinney, put the sign-up sheet up there for anybody who wants to. No, I have it back.
I think that's all of them, though.
Did we get the teacher?
Yep.
So it's-
Did you want to write his name down?
Yeah, I can.
You're just going to write his name down?
Yeah.
Okay. Write their name down, and then we'll do it. That's, I forgot where else I was going. Apologies, everyone.
You want to hear from what the public has to say before we make any major decisions?
Yeah, before we get too far, I mean, I know we're starting to have these discussions. I was hoping it would be like questions to Dr. McKinney, or, Samay, were you on the task force? Yes?
Yeah, Armani and I were both on the task force.
Okay, so questions for, sorry, Mr. Sahu, and Mr. Rogers, or Dr. McKinney, or Mr. Parker, and then hearing from the people who took the time on other evenings to come, and then maybe getting into the-
Questions.
Weeds after that. Is that okay?
Yeah, so, without further ado, if I don't have any objections, we can start with the public comment. Okay. Did we vote on that? I did steal your pen.
We did. It was 5 to 0. Thank you. I need it.
Sorry. I thought it was mine. So first up, we have, and we don't have addresses, because these are students, Reina Schroff.
On class rank, being an artist and school grades with undiagnosed ADHD. So I'm an artist first, then a musician. I write poetry here and there. I write poetry here and there, that's the order. I also have ADHD and I feel things, like emotions, I feel them deeply, and that depth of emotion, it brings me back to time when I was so confused about my school performance. Before I get to the topic of rank, let me give you some personal background on what it was like growing up with undiagnosed ADHD. My seventh grade math teacher had a poster above the whiteboard which read, "I'm possible." Seems harmless, doesn't it? Motivational even. Fine, the poster was right. Things were possible for me. My ADHD, it wasn't diagnosed then, and I got great grades at school. I got As, it was possible, but I reflect back and I know my brain was never designed to meet those expectations. It still haunts me, that feeling of knowing why, not knowing why I kept making mistakes, why I seemed to be an expert at one thing then a failure at the next, why I couldn't stay on top of things, on topic. It was so confusing to grow up with a brain that just learned differently, especially when it seemed like everyone else's brain stayed on track. These emotions turned me into a perfectionist, an overcompensator, so I overdid everything. I needed to prove that I was smart, that I was worth more than those conflicting feelings I held inside. It was possible for me to score well in school with ADHD, but those pressures left damage on my well-being, my self-worth, and so much more. I pulled through. I could manage. I excelled. It was possible. But at what cost? I've had serious advantages in life, too. Everything else fell in my favor so that I could succeed. But what about other students? What about those who deal with comorbid mental health issues, learning disability, family issues, chronic illness, financial issues? Do you think they're given a fair chance to excel in the ranks? What's the trade-off that occurs when we force kids to succumb to pressures they can't meet? We are not all on equal footing when it comes to academic performance, so why assume this, then rank people as if it's true? For many of us, giving in to these pressures is not healthy. We overwork, then let our health fall just to prove our stature in this unequal competition. Here's what I know: my brain was never designed to meet those expectations. As I said in the beginning, I'm an artist. ADHD people were often very, very creative. Well, I found my passion and my talent for art late because I was scared taking art classes would affect my rank, and I was scared that if I took art classes, I wouldn't have the schedule space to take AP classes, which I thought I had to take, you know, to prove myself, because I thought I was stupid, whatever. I thought that being an art person and taking art classes meant that I wasn't very smart. Someone even told me once that I wasn't challenging myself if I didn't take a certain number of AP classes. I discovered my passion for art late, and then put less time into that strength, because I constantly forced myself to do something more academic. The class rank system discouraged me from developing my creativity, and it discouraged me from pursuing what my brain is designed for. Albert Einstein, who was also thought to have ADHD, once said, "Everybody is a genius, but if you judge a fish by its ability to climb a tree, it will live its whole life believing that it is stupid." Don't wait for another student like me to go through all these emotions before you get rid of the rank. I'm sure there are many sophomores and juniors with the same story as me, some who are in the audience today. We are tired because we feel like the rank does not represent our learning accurately. Here's a joke, but you guys are acting like you have ADHD procrastinating on this decision, and trust me, I'm the first to understand. There's always something that seems more important, and there's always going to be, that's constant and unavoidable in politics and education, but please, make this a priority. Put it towards the top of your to-do list, like I put school assignments towards mine. Don't wait for a few years to go by for more students to feel like I felt. There's no point in that. Get rid of the ranks immediately and do it now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was that a poem that you wrote initially?
Uh.
It sounded like it. It had a canter to it. I liked it.
No, I just talk like that and write like that. That's like part of my personality, I guess, yeah.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Sriethan. What, are you laughing at me? Doing my best here.
Sri.
Sri?
Yeah.
Okay.
Pulling out my notes. All right. Sit down, okay. I just want to respond to Mrs. Johnson's comment about the competition. Competition is good as humans, it's our intrinsic behavior to like be competitive. We're born as animals to be competitive, but at a certain point, competition goes from being safe and friendly to like just being like a stressor in school and just being unhealthy. I've had people log into my X2 account and like look at my grades. I have people log into my Google Classroom and answer my assignments. I've had like people in classes judge me based on my grades, like group projects, I got an A on one, they literally kicked me out of the project because I didn't get an A+ on the project. Like, at that point, it's not even competition, they're just purely basing you off grades and not personality or character at all. And in the real world, it's not just about competition, it's about collaboration. And I feel rank isn't like promoting collaboration among students, it's purely just one-on-one competition. It's like, it's like a boxing match at this point, it's not like really working together. Oh, also, it's not just me, I've had previous teachers also talk to me about this. My AP bio teacher, like the South AP bio teacher, Ms. Colero, she said that when she went to North, that rank was a big issue there as well during her years. And freshman writing teacher at South said, "Rank during her year was also an issue." And these teachers graduated like multiple years ago, so this issue has not just been happening currently, it's been an issue that's been carried on for years to come, it's just been building up, it's just like growing exponentially at a certain point. Also, rank has just made me like stop learning, in a sense, because I've taken classes that I'm just like, oh, this is an easy class, I can get an easy A. And it's like, I'm not actually learning anything in these classes. I like take the class, I'll get the grade, and immediately after, I will completely forget everything in that class. And I don't want that to happen to me, because I want to use this information later in life. I want to be able to like learn, like actually learn for the fun of it and not learn for like the grade of the class, which has just been an issue, because I've had my mom, my mom told me before, she's like, "It's not about like the grade that you're getting, it's about the thing you learn from the class and you develop and mature." But I feel like the environment that I've been like growing, like living in at South is just not like the same. It's just basically purely like, get the grade, do the good, move on. It's not like learn the class, mature and develop as a person. So I just think like, rank has just made me into like a more like uncollaborative person, more just like a pure like competitive like behavior, you know? Thank you.
Thank you. Well, now I'm insecure.
The plan was to make you guys go through all the emotions and vote the right way.
What?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's just, can you, I just can't read his writing. To me, that looks like Jonathan.
Sriethan.
Sriethan. So I was close.
That was the second one.
I tried.
No, you're trying. I very appreciate you for making that.
Thank you. I can speak French, too. No, I can't anymore. Okay, so Sriethan, right? Is that what you said?
That's Sriethan.
Oh my god. Okay. No, you're up. Go ahead.
My name is Jay Raj, and so I basically came here just with my raw thoughts, so I'm going to try and keep it short and sweet as possible. When it came to class rank in my family specifically, we are an immigrant family, and mostly everybody in my family has done pretty well in school and academically. There's a lot of external pressure when it comes to learning and, you know, how I perform in school, because it's never basically, like Sriethan said, it's never basically really been about learning any of the topics that are presented to me, but mostly just keeping my GPA up and saying that I'm able to graduate with such a high class rank. And yeah, mostly things like that. And so I never really had an internal drive to keep up with my schoolwork. It's mostly come from just pressures from my family, from my classmates, from my, you know, even sometimes my teachers, too. And it kind of like moved me away from that message to, you know, learn for yourself and learn more, and just typically just care more about my grades than like what I'm actually interested in. So that's pretty much like all I wanted to say coming up here. Yeah, I don't have much more to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Pradwin.
My name is Pradhiti. I'm from Nashua High School South.
I'm throwing Heather under the bus on this one because I can't read your writing, so she rewrote it and it's completely wrong.
I did not write it. It's fine.
Wait, how else? What? I was going to say, you're all going to be doctors, aren't you? Because I can't read anything that you just wrote. All right, wait, I want to know how it's spelled. P-R-A, and then I don't know. Oh, that is not what that looks like. I apologize.
I also don't really have anything prepared, but I did speak last October about something that I will go into further detail about later. But just to give a little background about me, in elementary school, I got sent home six times because I had like a fever, but I showed up to school anyway without my mom's permission, and that's how much I did love learning. I feel like when we were younger, the classroom setting was kind of more, I feel like collaborative, because we aren't being put against each other in any way possible, we are just there to learn the basics and kind of move on. I feel like now, definitely, we keep stuff from each other from, because we're like, oh, if I share something that I found to my friend, they're going to have a higher chance of getting into college than I am, or they're like, oh, there's a study sheet that I'm not going to share with you because I have a higher chance of getting that A+ that you're not going to get, right? So like, it's like, kind of stopping each other from helping each other grow, instead of just focusing on yourself and keeping other like opportunities away from other kids. And I'm not saying that like, I feel like you can take the opportunities, but like, we're supposed to be friends, like we're supposed to share things with each other, like we're supposed to help each other grow into the people that we want them to be. And going back to what I said last October, as some of you may know already, I am diagnosed with anxiety and depression clinically, and last year was very stressful for me, not because of school. I do excel in school regularly, but I did not pass a class as well as much of, I didn't get the grade that I wanted because of outside circumstances. My grandparents passed away, and I had a final that I did not do well on because I found out 15 minutes before the test that I took, and the test was solely based on that one grade. At the end of that class, I feel like I understood the material but didn't have the chance to show that I did. And as much as I would like to, I can't change my GPA because of that class, and I can't change my rank because I got a bad grade in that class, even though I could. I did understand the material and I did push myself to study no matter how much was going on at home, which is what really hurt me, because I wasn't able to give my family the attention that they needed, even though I should have, because nothing that I did changed my grade in the end. But moving on from that, there's multiple reasons why class rank is not bad. I walk through the B wing hallway now because I take ceramics, which is the first art class I've ever taken in the past four years. But there's actually a nursing CTE program that I didn't know about until this year because I saw people wearing uniforms. And I was like, why are they wearing uniforms? And I asked one of them, because one of them was a person that I knew, and she's like, "Yeah, we have a CTE program that gets you like CPR certified." And I was just like, since when? Because I wasn't knowledgeable about this. And opportunities like this have kept me from like taking those classes. There's biotechnology that some of my friends have taken, and they did so much better in AP Biology because they took that class, because they were able to understand how certain types of microscopes work, how certain types of cells divide and separate. Like, it's just certain classes that are unweighted, that people in, I guess, our academic range would not think of taking because they're not weighted. And my friends that do take biotechnology, that understand AP Bio better than I do, still have lower GPAs than I do. And I don't think that's fair to them, because they understand the material of an AP class so much more than I do. And it's not just one that situation, there's multiple situations where all of us try so hard to get those grades that we want, yet there's an outside circumstance, or there's multiple reasons as to why we don't do as well, or it's just, we try so hard and we don't, we get As and A-'s compared to A+'. And if you don't know already, like South's GPA for the top 10 or top 20 can be like valedictorians at other schools, and it's just, like, the GPA, like, we are so close to each other that being one number below each other doesn't do us justice, that like being in that like Latin system would at least do us justice, because we'd be on the same playing field as the rest of us, even though they worked, not even they worked a tiny bit harder, they just got that A+ instead of that A. And some teachers also don't give A+ at South, which is a different question. We all get different English teachers, we all get different like social studies teachers, it's just, it's not even their fault, it's just, we got the wrong teacher, we didn't get the A+, we got the A. So I don't necessarily think that's fair for us, to be 10 instead of nine, just because that teacher didn't want to give us an A+ instead of an A. That's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much for coming. Next up, we have, is that Crystal?
No.
Oh, she's not here. Is that, was that how you pronounced that, though? No. That is. Okay, good. Just wanted to make sure.
I'm now questioning my ability to decipher handwriting.
Oh, these are, I want to know what like medicine these guys are going to go into.
They're on the list.
Yes. She's, oh, last. First, next up, we have Leo Duval.
Lex is on.
Lex.
I don't know.
What medicine are you going into? Driving me crazy? What the heck's going on here?
I'll go into law, but my handwriting can be bad for that, too, I guess.
I did write Lex.
Okay, I gave up on yours pretty fast.
I did have.
Sriethan wrote those. Sriethan wrote those. I printed, he wrote.
So hello.
Thank you, Lex, hi.
Lex Duval, 25, Hall Ave. I'm also a resident of Nashua. AP Psych teacher, four years now at Nashua South, and even though it's been four years, I can say that every single one of those years, the competitiveness, the academic dishonesty, the lack of collaboration, and honestly, the lack of community that I've been seeing at the AP level because of class rank in particular, is bad, and it gets worse and worse every single year. This doesn't even take in consideration their mental health. I have never, in my years now at teaching, and I know it's not a lot at AP, but I've never seen so many students out for mental health days. It's actually bad. I mean, we're talking about students who would have never missed a day, who are now to the breaking point, having to literally take multiple days, sometimes weeks off at a time, because they cannot handle the academic pressure that is being put on them to reach a number. And to reach another point, we have block scheduling. They can only take four classes a semester. It does them a major disservice when most AP classes are full year. So how can AP students also take art, also take ceramics, also take music, also nurture their whole child, if they're told the only thing that matters is AP weighted classes? It's a true disservice to the whole child, it's a disservice to everything that these students can be and should be. And quite honestly, I think if it continues, their mental health is only going to get even worse. I can, yeah, talk to the parents, trust me, I do talk to the parents. I can hear in the booth. I can hear in the booth, just saying, we can hear you, sir. I do talk to the parents and they're also concerned about this. Please, seriously. Like, if you value the students, the students who have gone forth, who have taken the time to be here today, who have taken the time to put themselves out here, if you value them, really, please consider this. I'm not the only one who sees it. And only that, but the academic dishonesty too. You're seeing kids who would have never cheated in their life literally go after their best friends to get ahead. Is that the type of students we want coming out of this district? You guys are doing good here, keep it up.
Thank you. And next, we have Ashanvi. Did I do it? Hey.
Hi, my name's Ashanvi. I'm a junior at Nashua South. I'd say class rank has had only a negative impact on me and my mental health. A year ago today, I was, I was pretty happy. I was happy with like everything I was doing. And then I got this like added pressure from my guidance counselors, from my friends, from my peers, like teachers. At the beginning of junior year, I had this decision, take AP Bio, take Biotech. I did end up choosing AP Bio. I wouldn't say it was fully my decision, but I had this pressure that I needed to have that upper hand, I needed to have that good GPA, so I didn't end up taking Biotech. And I really, really wish I did because it's a two-year program. It gets me like so many opportunities in the medical field. But here I am, taking AP Bio, and it's probably one of the worst decisions I've ever made academically. And I think that class rank has had the same effect on a lot of people. I wish I was taking more art-based classes also, but I just don't have space in my schedule because I'm trying to get those classes that have more weight, that will have more of an effect on my GPA. So I've placed a standard on myself that I can't reach academically. It's disappointing and, I don't know, there's like not much I can do about it right now. Like, everyone's just trying their best, but it certainly doesn't help having this pressure. So I really hope you guys will consider switching to a different type of scaling system. But yeah, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. And that is all of the people who are signed up for public comment. And we can return back to our discussion. Do we have any follow-up questions or comments? Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. I just want to clarify with Dr. McKinney. Should we make a motion to accept this proposal regarding the changing the GPA to align with the competencies? I just want to be crystal clear that that would eliminate the five-point ranking scale for APs. So kids taking AP Bio who got an A would be a 375 and kids taking Biotech, for example, who got a 375, those would all both be the same 375. And then, okay. Thank you. I can keep talking, but I don't, that was my question.
I thought we were gonna have information funnel up, but, Ms. Brown?
Sure, I'll go next.
Were you done, Ms. Raymond?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I can make a motion, but I thought people had questions.
So I support the shift. I think that this is actually an opportunity to maybe increase rigor in our district for more students who are, you know, in the high achieving, but not highest achieving level. I think an unweighted, weighting a GPA and is the big, and that's the thing I'm most happy about, to see the shift in this kind of mentality. And the fact that we're keeping a pretty demanding course load, 30 credits, is still mandatory to reach these cum laude and magna claudet, sum cum laude status. So it means that, you know, I think our graduation is 19 credits, so that's still pretty stringent and asking a lot of kids. I think that changing, moving away from the five-point scale or weighting certain classes, it's gonna open kids up with opportunities to take a wider variety of classes, encourage dual enrollment, which for a lot of families is, I don't know if people are at home, dual enrollment is where you can take a class that counts for both high school credit and also college credit simultaneously. For low-income families, it's an enormous opportunity. And for any family, not just low-income families, starting college with not just an AP credit, which may or may not be accepted at the university. If you've already taken Comp 1, it's a great opportunity. CTE opportunities, we oftentimes look at vocational as an opportunity to just go straight from high school into a work scenario, but it also can be a launching platform for career. You know, there's some schools that have CTE programs in pre-law, paralegal programs. Actually, one of my best friends in college graduated with her LPN's license while I was working in restaurants. She was working two pretty and weekends a week, making twice as much as me. Now she's an attorney, so good for her. And we look, we don't always look at those programs as the powerful learning and life launching opportunities it can be. And also, I think we've had the first couple of young, actually, all of the people that have come here tonight have spoken about how they've had an opportunity to find, discover art not until they were juniors or seniors. That's actually one of my passions. And I know that there's a drop-off when students get to high school in art and music, our band student. A lot of kids don't get to take band or, don't take the opportunity to take band because it's not a weighted course, or they don't have room for it in their AP schedule, which, you know, you're not gonna have a lot of time and opportunities as a grown-up to play music with a group of folks. And if you can get an opportunity to do that when you're young, embrace it. So I think there's actually more opportunities for more people to be encouraged if they're right at that precipice where they are teetering between, really striving to meet even the cum laude status. It might give them the opportunity to push them a little bit harder, whereas the kids that are already motivated at the top are just competing for a few tiny slots. I have two, a couple, just a few questions, but my primary question is, if the administration is supportive of this, why wouldn't we start it right now? Especially with, for the, I mean, the seniors, they're obviously in the home stretch, but the junior classes and moving forward. Shift that scale so that we can maybe encourage more opportunities for these other forms of growth for all of the students right now as opposed to waiting four years.
Back, I believe when February was, when we made this recommendation, was to include this in the eighth grade transition when kids come to the high school so they know right from the start, this is the lay of the land and this is kind of the rules of the road, and not change it for students in the midst of their high school career. That way, it's kind of a clean slate. That's one. And two, this is gonna require some backend work in Aspen and making some changes. We traditionally do that over the summer. So this is gonna require a little lead time and work and it all depends on all the other things that are happening during the district. So if we can do that with the lead time and do the build-out, then we'll be able to have it set up to the new system within that amount of time. So we usually don't make changes in the midst of a school year. We try to do it over the summer. That combined with the transition of eighth to ninth is the reasoning from the task force. Unless I missed anything, I believe that was in summation, the reasons why.
Ms. Raymond had a follow-up question, then?
To that.
Go ahead. Did you have an answer to that?
Oh, yeah, I was just gonna say that, yes, that it was the reasoning behind the task force's recommendation for the implementation date, starting with the class of 2026. That was what the majority on the task force had to say. There were those who were on the task force who did not agree with that and wanted the implementation date to start with the class of 2023. So I will say that that thought of yours, Ms. Brown, isn't unheard of and it was voiced and expressed on there, so.
So, yeah, that's kind of my follow-up. I find myself agreeing with everything that Ms. Brown just said, especially about encouraging our kids to seek out alternate things that aren't just APs. And I hate to say just APs because that is a tremendous opportunity and I'm so proud to be in a district that we have that opportunity for our kids. However, our mission statement is to educate the whole child to empower student success. And when I think of the whole child, I think of more than just AP, more than just CTE, more than getting stuck in one track and instead getting the opportunity to experience a variety of classes when you're young to find out what your interests and talents are. So on that thought, I'm thinking about our current policy regarding GPA and class rank. And our current policy, the number, the letter numbers, which are escaping me at the current moment, but I can look it up, says that we start calculating it in junior year. So freshman and sophomore year, your classes don't count towards your GPA, not your GPA, your classes don't count to your class rank. But they start in junior year that they start counting towards your class rank. So why would we not start this with the class of 2024?
I think they're saying that's not true.
That's what our policy says.
So you almost got it, it's just a little mistake there, but.
No, tell me if you've got it right there.
So, um, so all of the coursework that a student takes throughout their entire high school career counts into their GPA, which gets ranked amongst their class for their class rank. But students only see their class rank and it's only calculated in the junior year, in the first semester of junior year. So we have some juniors in the audience, like, they, when we had our first meeting when class rank was on the agenda, they just had their rank for two weeks when this first came here to the board. So all of the coursework that a student takes goes into their class rank that's expressed on their transcript, including course rigor, which is what these colleges look at. It's just that they see the class rank in junior year. But like I said, all of the factors that contribute into their class rank, that's already expressed, colleges will always see that. And that is what the colleges are looking for, regardless of whether we offer the numerical rank or not.
Okay. How does that, sorry, now that makes me think of another one. How does that factor in with kids who are doing Learn Everywhere or an independent study for a semester? Like, how do, do they get like a regular grade for their Learn Everywhere experience?
I can't speak to that tonight. I can reach back out to the Directors of Guidance.
It just, you know, off the cuff.
The two things I would say in reaction to moving the timeline further, you know, if you wanted to approve this tonight and/or want me to go back to the team and ask if it's possible to move it forward, I could do that. But I've had three kids go to school and it's about, my daughter's graduating from high school this year, my other son's graduated from college. It's about the four years of work and the body of their work matching the admission criteria for the schools that they go to. And then you start that beginning freshman year. So you don't change the rules of the game at halftime of a soccer game. I think it's fair to the kids to let them know. Now, we certainly can do messaging and support to all the teachers in the classes of saying, this is coming and let's dial it back. Like the kids have spoken, I've taught kids in eighth grade. I taught a student who was the top of his class and he actively taunted the other kids because he knew mathematically they were never gonna catch him. So we can do things to help and support that and change the dynamic. This is a piece of it. I don't think it's gonna do everything, right? It's not a quick fix, but it's certainly letting people know. Take the classes you're interested in, it's about the learning you're doing and the, doing your very best. And if you make a certain level in the Latin system, then good for you. But it's not about stacking your schedule with all the AP classes so that you have bragging rights over your peer group. So that would be my response to that.
Is there a way that we can begin assigning the Latin ranking now without changing anything?
Well, certainly, anything's possible. This would not be built into Aspen, so we would have to, it would be a tall order to find some way to extract the data and then rank it and then print it out. So that's basically the backend work that we're looking to do is to have these custom builds in Aspen, which are traditionally done over the summer. It costs about $1,500 and then those are the ones that we run over the course of the year. Just like if we were to go to this system and somebody said, could you tell me what my rank is? We would still have that information available to us in a report. So I believe that's, again, my last conversation with the tech department around that. If you wanted me to look into that further, I'd have to speak to the high school principals and the Directors of Guidance, so, thank you.
Mr. Claffey?
Yeah, I had two questions. Second one's kind of a follow-up. In the past, I think we've had valedictorians and salut, number two, separated by hundreds of thou, is that, hundreds of thousands, that's six decimal places? Five or six? Is that?
Yeah, that's always been the case, that's currently the case. And if we continue, it will be the case.
So my follow-up is, how would, how would the students, how would you two feel if we rounded sooner? Because looking at the fut, I'm, I'm listening to these moving speeches. I came in here thinking the, I understand the deadline, or the implementation makes perfect sense. Plus, who knows, a parent might sue us, a parent of incoming, you know, if we were to make this effective for juniors, I'm afraid that some parents would be, it wouldn't be fair. But, but what can we do to take the pressure off of sophomores and juniors is round to the hundreds? I mean, then we'd have, we'd probably have 15 number ones? But if we're using, it looks like we're gonna be rounding to the hundreds to determine distinction down the road. How would you guys feel about rounding to the nearest hundredth?
It's definitely an option. I'm just trying to think what, I understand the intent behind it and like the effects that it's gonna have. My concern is that it's just not enough. And, but like, I see where you're coming from. I just don't think that it will, not that it won't have the desired effect, I just don't think it'll have much of an effect, to be honest with you. Like, the direct correspondence between a student's GPA and this arbitrary number that we're assigning them via rank isn't gonna change. And that's what this, I think some of the students are trying to express is one of the main parts of the problem. But I would say that that solution of yours is better than 2026 implementation date. That's just performative.
Dr. McKinney?
I'll just share this, and I know you can't read, everything's on here, but if you just look at the colors from that same survey that went out in the needs assessment of June, these are the survey results kind of bucketed by theme from students, teachers, and parents. And there's consensus between those three groups on the top two skills that they want kids to have when they leave the high school. And the top two are communication and adaptability. And I don't know if the conversation we're having now meets that. So this work definitely needs to move forward. The next third and fourth place goes to creativity, conflict resolution, and critical thinking and problem solving. And while you can make the argument that it's probably demonstrated in your GPA, you know, the numbers, and just like it was on these fact sheets, your GPA is a piece of the puzzle of who you are in terms of an application to a higher institution. It isn't the whole thing. It's about all the other things you bring to the place. Community service, the before and after-school activities, your background, all of those things. These are the skills that the community is looking for us to promote. So I think the next step in the work for the district is getting this portrait of a learner communicated widely, K-12 and in the community, that these are the skills of importance. Because if we have kids that can't work together in a team setting because they're that competitive, that's certainly a challenge. So I know we're here for one issue, but it's, you know, it's a piece of the pie, if you will. Thank you.
Did you have something, Mr. Parker?
Adam, don't need to repeat, it's already been said. I'll keep it there.
Okay. Ms. Brown?
So I had two questions. First, you have the support of the Guidance Department to make the shift. Is that an accurate statement? Okay.
It is.
And second, if we were to move up the timeline, I recognize it is a lot of work. Is it possible? Is it possible? It's not, it's not, it is possible, correct?
No one's talking. He just nodded.
Anything's possible, yes.
Well, not to be cheeky here, but one of our priorities is adaptability. Shouldn't we be leading from the district?
Whoa, mic drop moment. Yeah. Yep. I don't know if Mr. Rodriguez will respond with the same enthusiasm, but I think it's something we could look into. Yep.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I got a call from a parent today that was really upset. I thought she was going to be here tonight. Obviously, she, something must have happened, she couldn't make it. And I think her daughter's either in eighth or ninth grade right now. She grew up so fast, I didn't keep up with her. But the sad thing is, is that what about these parents that want their kids still in this weighted GPA? And if we move it up faster? You know, it's one thing that you have that anticipation starting several years from now, but if we move it up and that, and she was really concerned about this. So I can't support moving it up at this point in time because there are parents that anticipate their children being in this program with the weighted GPA. So I'm just, and I'll tell you something, I'm still kind, I hear what the students are saying and, and I understand. I understand students with ADD and ADHD. Oh, I understand that. And make no mistake, these students are brilliant and their brain does function differently. And when their brain works on a certain thing and they focus on that, they are brilliant. I just am on the fence on this. So if the vote comes down tonight, I'm not going to support this because I can't support moving any of the dates up because I heard from a parent today. I wish more people would have come. I wish I would have hear from parents of the students here too, because I'd like to hear what their input is from seeing their students work so hard and the competition. I'm just really on the fence on this one. We've put this off for so long and now it came up this week that I think really, we put it off since October to now and we haven't talked really about it. We didn't really go back into a presentation again, a real presentation to really look at everything again. We get material, the students did an excellent job, a lot of work put into this, not enough time to study all this because it just got put on out, all this, tonight. And so I'm just, I'm just really on the fence. I'm not going to support this and I'm not going to support moving it up at this point in time. You know, that's just who I am. I've got to go by what my feelings are. And I know if the vote comes tonight, it will pass. So it's four against one, the majority wins, and I don't have a problem.
Mr. Claffey?
Well, since we know the vote, may I move the question?
I have, I would like to propose that we do two motions. One, I would suggest that we move to adopt the, to revise the GPA scale. And then the second motion I would suggest is the class rank, I'm sorry, to identify the diplomas with distinction as, I know, advised. So I wrote down what I would suggest, but you can write down, you can say it the way you want.
Well, I was just, can we, can we vote on the final recommendation, given that both of those pieces are in it?
I suppose you could put it at one, I don't care.
No, I don't either. I just want, I'm new here, so.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to make them short. Yeah.
I would, I would ask that we.
Want me to read?
Adopt the final recommendation from the class rank task force as presented to us on 2/21/22.
I'll second that. Okay, hold on, let me write it down. Now we can discuss. I know what you're going to say. Adopt the final recommendation of the task force.
Class rank task force, yes.
That was presented to us in this memo, February 18th, 2022? Yes.
February 21st, 2022.
Why do I have a different date? I don't know.
I'm looking at.
He's, my memo says, "To the Board," from Garth McKinney, dated February 18th, 2022. And then it has all of the grades and the other stuff. Am I getting confused?
No, I believe the gentleman's referring to the date of the memo and then the meeting was held that Monday, which was the 21st.
Oh, okay. Yep. Okay. So the motion is to approve. Adopt. To adopt the recommendations above. The final recommendation of the class rank task force as presented. In the memo dated February 18th, 2022. Is that acceptable to Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
And so, I'm sorry, I don't have my form, so I am. It's okay. I'm trying to remember every little piece of it that is on the form. And then does anyone, everybody has this paper in front of them and then it was also attached to the agenda on our website, right? I'm sorry, everyone else's doesn't have all my scribbling all over it, I assume. Ms. Brown?
So, again, I support this. And the only reason I raised my hand is because I kind of was going to try to word it differently. But I would like to move up the date, but I don't want to waste the board's time, you know, I don't, by doing a whole bunch of amendments. So by amending it to 2023 and then get whether that votes, and then 2024 and 2025. So I was wondering if we could just have a discussion or kind of see where people feel, the board members feel about moving up the date, where you would be interested in moving it up to. I would be interested in moving it up to the class of 2023, but if that won't work, then I'll go down the line. Does anyone else in the committee feel similarly?
I, I do. I agree. I'd like to see this moved up, but I'm hearing the concerns about getting X2 ready to go and also kind of, you know, honoring the students that don't have that time to transition into this new thought process. Even though we have students here who are in support of this, we also have students that, you know, they have been working for their class rank. It's been an embedded belief in their academic career since, I mean, in eighth grade, we decide what math class we're going to go into and that sets off the trajectory for math. So you have students who, you know, summer of eighth grade start making these decisions. So I would stick with the 26, just because I think the, the thinking process needs to change, the computer stuff needs to change. Do I think it's fair? No. I'd love for the students to be able to decide what, how they want to graduate and in what capacity. But I think in certain circumstances, we do kind of have to, you know, do the domino effect that administration can do appropriately and to the best of their abilities. Does anybody disagree with me? Ms. Raymond?
I don't disagree. But I also, I was very much for starting it with, at a minimum, the current sophomores. But, but Mr. Sahu's explanation of that, the way that we do the class ranking and that it starts with your freshman and sophomore classes, which I really didn't, I really thought we didn't do that because of kids transferring in. So unless I, I got to look into that. I was trying to find all of the policies while we were talking and we have too many policies to find exactly what I want. So at this point, I think what I would prefer to do is go ahead and do it with the 2026. And then Mr. Parker and I can look at our policies. My quick guess is that we have to do some changes to ILBAA-R, which is, lists the competency grading scale. And so we, we need to align that to whatever our, our motion is tonight. And then I'll see if we have any other policies that would be impacted by this. And if we find, you know what I mean, that that is something that we need to bring forward, I would rather do that. I don't want to bring the whole thing back again. Because I, I am hearing the students, they've been waiting, they've did all this research, they presented it in October, then people didn't feel prepared in February, then we were going to meet in March or April, we had like a date, and then that didn't happen because life happens. So thank you guys for waiting till I recovered from my surgery.
I'm, I'm wondering if, because what I'm concerned about is the shift in ideology in regards to how kids and students view their academics. I don't know if there's a possibility to work in, you know, in this, in this shift change work in some professional development, because it sounds like the whole shift needs to be within the school. I don't know if that's a possibility that we can work in as well, is, is not being so, you know, ranked order within the students, but encourage that holistic. And I'm sure there's just, people think a certain way and they believe certain things and they're not wrong. It's just when you say it over and over and over and over again, it's hard to get out of that, that habit. So maybe, I mean, that's a different discussion for a different day, but, you know, I think there are different ways of addressing how we make this shift and it's not just in, it's not just in numbers, it's in thinking. And the thinking would be within the professional development. And then having the kids start buying in, I mean, I think the second, I know probably, if it goes with 2026, and I'm anticipating you guys not being happy with that, but I anticipate if we as a board start making this shift at our leadership level, it's, school's going to feel different for you guys. Like whether or not you graduate first, second, or third, you're going to know that the shift in our ideologies is that we no longer see you as ranked students. It's an arbitrary method of quantifying your work that is just kind of a grandfathered in thought process now. So I think we're going to see that shift, it just won't be on paper. It'll be in feelings, which is exactly what we're trying to do, to make high school more holistic. Ms. Brown?
So if I can just make a couple more arguments to sway you, maybe I could try to bring you back over to the, the good side.
The brown side?
Yeah, the brown side. Can we bring the psych professor back up? Maybe he hasn't. The, so I think that, I, I understand what you're saying. I like the philosophy, but I think what these kids are being consumed with more so, this is what I'm hearing from them and honestly, what I've observed, I went to a high school that had a weighted class, class rank system and I know what it's like. And it was a few years ago. I think the pressure these students are feeling is familial, from their, is family pressure and then student ideology. I think that's what's leading this charge. I don't think it's actually from their teachers. I think their teachers recognize that they should be absorbing the information, learning, intrinsically motivated to do their best and turn in their best work. So I, while, you know, I think that there are a lot of things that we can do through better teaching practices and, and professional development, I don't think it's the teachers that are putting this kind of pressure on students right now. The other thing that I think, the other part of this is, and that's why I mentioned the AP teacher who spoke earlier, he's saying it's escalated year after year after year after year, compounded with, and I hate to bring this up, but the realities of COVID and the pressures that students have had in their academic career, these, I mean, freshmen who haven't had a regular year since they were in seventh grade, sixth grade, and then, and so on, and so on, and so on. And I think you're going to see that same trend with, you know, the kids that are juniors now and sophomores, sophomores and juniors. And they're in, and most of these classes, people, kids that are taking AP classes are also in mixed age group classes. You're seeing this maturity difference as well, compounded. I think adding that extra bit of anxiety, if we could take that one thing away from them sooner than later, I think there's real value in that. And I recognize it's going to be a hard mental shift, emotional shift, no matter when we do it. Do it today, do it tomorrow, do it two years from now, do it five years from now. But I think it's a way we could really lead the district in a positive direction and to put some pressure on us. The original motion was supposed to be in April. We were supposed to have something in April of 2020. That's, so kind of the pushing out of this is a little bit on the board as well. I mean, and getting the things to come together. So does that sway anybody over to the brown side?
Would we be able to have the computer system up and going for 2024? Because if we were going to vote on this two years ago, would that, would that give enough time? I mean, I'm half tempted to even say like, let's just get rid of class rank right now.
So restate the question again? The question is?
So instead of, would the computer system be ready by 2024?
For the graduating class?
And they're currently?
Yeah. For the graduating class of 2024.
They're sophomores. I'm sorry.
They're sophomores now.
Again, anything's possible. I'm not the tech person, I don't work with Aspen. Again, it's changing the rules mid-game for kids who have already started. They're two years in, you know, you've heard from a handful of students, they're, they're building their GPA based on their freshman and sophomore years. Now, is that going to change? No, they're, they're still going to earn that, but you're, you're changing the system after they've been in a weighted system to cleaning it so that it's all an A's and A, regardless of what you're doing.
Okay.
So.
I hear what you're saying.
Could it, you know, my son freshman year, we lived in another state, we lived in Texas and he moved to Mass. They recalculated everything because he was in one state to another. So now you're doing that to kids mid-year and you're changing the system. So if you were to do it any earlier, you'd have to have kind of parallel things going on. Again, that's the reason why the 14 people that were on the task force that are close to this work, including the two directors of guidance, had said, it's just cleaner and easier if you just let everybody know then. Thank you.
Quick, well, actually, I saw Mr. Claffey first. I'm actually interested because I know his, being a teacher, probably.
I thought I had a motion on the floor, but I guess it wasn't seconded?
I seconded it.
So what happened to that?
So we're having discussion.
Okay. All I want to say, I thought we were getting hung up.
And Jessica's being a fantastic team player by not throwing out 17 different amendments, but allowing this possible amendment to happen organically.
I just thought we were hung up on X2 rather than the other piece, which is changing the rules and.
I think, I think we were, and that's, the conversation has.
I do fear that we'd be subject to a lawsuit from some parent whose student has gone through all the stress that we heard tonight, all the suffering, staying up late, and all of a sudden, I, and do you think we could potentially be sued by a parent who feels that this is unfair?
We could be sued for anything.
I was going to say, the potential of a lawsuit arises every day with the sun, so it could happen. But could there be people that are unhappy? Sure. Could there be people that, you know, feel like you're changing the game and you're taking away the work my child did for two years and now you're reverting it to something else? Sure. I mean, the likelihood of you hearing that within the next week is probably pretty good. But again, this is a merit-based system where, you know, you take the courses you're interested in and based on how well you do, you know, you're going to walk away with, you know, a task or around you and saying, you met a 3.0 and you did really well. And instead of taking the AP course, you took some of the fantastic CTE offerings we have here, and maybe you're going to be that nursing student someday as opposed to, you know, trying to stack your class schedule so that you're never going to fall behind X number of kids.
And just one other point, from a teacher's perspective, no one's spoken to that, but if you have the valedictorian in your class or the salutatorian, and you, or both at the same time.
Have the valedictorians tied.
I am telling you, that hap, that, that's stress. If you, if you're teaching a humanities class where there's, you know, you're grading essays, maybe, you know, you're trying to be objective, math or science is a little more straightforward, but I'm, sleepless nights worrying about how the grade a student gets in your class is going to affect that rank in class. And I know some personal nightmares I can't share.
Not mine.
So wouldn't that make you want to change it and get rid of it now?
Exactly.
Instead of?
But that's what I'm trying to say. Eighty percent of students, staff and teachers said they support changing it, but we can't. As much as I've, and talking to teachers this week, they want it. The ones, I mean, I didn't talk to everybody, but you just can't. It's bait and switch.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Gentlemen?
Thank you. It's not can, it's won't. To be honest, we have this. We have this option to make an amendment. Right now, it's looking like won't. It's not can't, to be honest. And we talked about changing the rules mid-game, bait and switch. Armani and I are juniors, and next year, hopefully will be the first year where COVID-19 hasn't impacted our education at all. We, I had Mr. Claffey when COVID hit, and he knows, Duval knows what that did to teaching, what that did to students and learning. And then we had almost a semester, if not more, or a little less, of students not having a choice of whether they could have in-person instructional learning. They didn't get an option for that. It took so long, almost a year, for us to have normalcy in the Nashville School District, and that's changing the rules, whether you like it or not, whether it's our fault or not, whether we could control it or not. So I just don't think that it's something that, the class rank, this current ranking system, it's not something that we have to keep. It's, we just, we've been postponing this for years and years and years and years and years, and now just having this conversation has been postponed for months upon months upon months. We've postponed this meeting, and now it's May. And now what we're hearing is that we're going to postpone it another four years because bait and switch, or because we're changing the rules. The rules have already been changed so many times, and we talk about how every single member of this board wants to uphold the highest standard of education in the Nashville School District, including maintaining our academic integrity. But here we are, hypothetically punishing the students who did maintain their academic integrity throughout all this remote learning versus the students, the top 10, 20, top 10% of students who, I'm not saying all of them did it, I'm saying some of them did, and we all know that. Some of them can cheat, everyone had the option to cheat, it was very accessible, it's just a quick copy and paste, and you'll get the answers right at your fingertips for a lot of these classes. And here we are punishing students for maintaining their academic integrity, not getting the highest grades because they didn't, they chose not to cheat, you know, having to fight through mental health episodes for over a year of COVID, and then you're saying that we're just going to wait for 2020 whatever because we don't want to switch, we don't want to put, like, change the rules. The rules have already been changed, and class of 2023 has just been forced to adapt, adapt, adapt. We've talked about adaptability being something that we want our students to be able to walk out of the district with that ability. And then you're saying, well, we're just going to pick and choose what you guys get to adapt with. This, what the task force has recommended, we all know, is that, that this is, will cause a positive change for this district, whether it's at the administrative end, with the teachers, or with changing the outlook of the students' academics. And to be honest, it just sounds performative from my end, and I know the students will feel it too, that we're going to acknowledge all the problems with class rank, and then we have these excuses, honestly, to postpone it, you know? Dr. McKinney said anything is possible on the X2 end. I'm using your words against you. And, and at the last meeting, when Ms. Lampier asked Mr. Richard what would be the repercussions if we did this earlier, he said, I don't think there would be any repercussions, I don't see any negative consequences. That's a quote I wrote it down. And it, it just seems performative, to be honest, and I don't know what else to really say, because right now, we have two groups of students. We have the top 10 or 20 students who seem to benefit from maintaining the system for four more years, or we have the rest of the student body, those who've been struggling with mental health, those who've been struggling financially, those who felt abandoned over the past year of remote learning. It's, I don't know. What is it?
Mr. Claffey?
I just, you've put together some wonderful research, and I just, don't you feel now that rank doesn't matter, so can't you just relax next year and focus on learning and challenging yourself? I don't mean to direct that to a member of the board, I'm just saying, I hope the word gets out to all your fellow seniors. It's considered, but why worry about it?
No, yeah, and I totally understand that. Personally, I can have gotten to the point where I'm content with myself and my academics, where I can ignore, for the most part, the negative effects of class rank, and I have confidence in my academic ability and my prior academic performance, and I've done this research for years where that's how I knew how to get all of these data, all the data for all these different higher education programs, where I'm fine. But I'm here as a representative of my student body, and the surveys are enough to show that I'm standing up for what my student body believes in, and this is a fight that I'm worth. I'm putting it all out there for, regardless of how this ends up.
Last time. Is the gentle lady yield? Just because it's.
Mr. Parker has a.
Real quick.
So one, two, three.
The recommendation says 2026, so who do you represent? Like, I don't.
I'll let. I would say that right now, in the position with the hat that I'm speaking, if I'm speaking as student representative of the Board of Education from Nashville South. Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Parker?
Couple of things going through my mind. I appreciate everything that's been said, but the task of the district and the board is to lay out a process and make a recommendation that allows for orderly transition and scaffolding to a different culture, all right? And that's always messy. And even though it's 2026, all right, and I've gone through this, I've done it, smaller district, okay, maybe less time, but we could do that, okay, in a five-building district with one high school, right, a little under 1,000. What I will say, no matter what year you put to it, this conversation that's televised will change the nature of the narrative of what people feel is possible to do, leading up to the actual transition, right? That is not insignificant, okay? Are there, can we point out to inequity, unfairness on either side? Of course there is. It is what it is, okay? And picking and choosing is not going to ameliorate that on either side, okay? And so there's a process, but it's not an end unto itself, all right? Having this conversation is giving many people permission, all right, to speak and to act differently, all right? And make no mistake, this conversation will have an impact on the middle schools even before the transition. It has to. It has to, okay? How we leverage it until the transition comes, all right, is key.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Ms. Brown?
Oh. I'll go.
Ms. Raymond?
Do you want to talk? You can go if you want.
I'm listening.
Oh, all right. I've been listening to everybody, and I think my philosophy on the board the last five years has been to try and do the most good for the most people, and also to protect the most vulnerable. Like, those are my two kind of guiding principles. And that's what, you know, has led me to advocate for some of our, like, our transgender and gender nonconforming students policy. That was to protect a group that needed to be protected. That's how we got into all the mess with, with COVID, it was trying to be protective. So I'm warring with myself because the protective me and the, the part of me that's thinking the most good for the most students, which is what we're supposed to be doing, says that we should do this sooner rather than later. I don't think that it is logistically possible to do it for the current juniors. Sorry, guys. I don't think it would have been logistically possible in October either, because this kind of stuff doesn't happen during the school year, because people are busy teaching and handling IT problems and doing all the things that everybody's doing during the year. I would support doing it for 2024, even though it will drive Dr. McKinney absolutely nuts. I'm like watching his migraine explode behind his eyes as I speak. And I, I understand the argument about changing horses midstream, but Mr. Sahu's arguments and the fact that the only people who showed up here were people who wanted it changed desperately, but Mr. Sahu's arguments, where he pointed out all of the things that the current student body has dealt with during COVID and the changes, and we did pass fail, and we did some other things, so we've kind of really, really interfered with how class rank is. And part of our decision-making with that was knowing that this conversation was coming, right? And I remember Haley Sweeney, who was a student rep back in 2018? Seventeen, eighteen?
Just keep saying numbers.
Yeah, I think it was one of those. Brought this up for the first time. So it had to be 2018. So she brought it up the very first time and said, this is, you know, this is something I've been looking into as I'm applying to colleges, and, and she had brought up this whole idea of how challenging it was. So it's been four years since I first heard of this. I think we have enough data points. I, I'm really moved by Mr. Sahu's discussion, and I would, I would move to change it to 2024, the class graduating in 2024, which splits the difference between now and waiting until the, the incoming freshman. I know it changes horses midstream, but I think however we do it, it's going to change horses midstream, because if we do it for 2026, all the kids who are in high school now, those three grades are going to be affected. So, because we've made it one motion where we're changing the grading scale. So that's my, I, I'll make it a formal amendment. I move to amend the implementation of the recommendations to the class of 2026.
Twenty-four.
Oh, 2024, geez Louise.
I'll second.
I have to write it down. Thank you.
Okay. On the amendment to move the implementation date up to 2024, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
So three, two.
Three, two, it passes. The implementation of, I'm sorry. And then we have to go back to the original motion. I'm ready. 2024. You can go whenever you're ready, Jen.
I'm just waiting for you.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to remember every little thing that's on the sheet.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
Okay.
Okay, so without any further discussion or comments, correct? I am looking, I'm looking for, I'm getting behind. On the motion to adopt the final recommendation of the class rank task force as presented in memo dated 2018-2022, with an implementation date of 2024, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Four to one, motion passes.
This is four to one.
That would look good in a college resume, huh? Helped implement this. Make sure you're making a bullet of what you achieved, not just what your responsibilities were. Good job, guys.
Okay. That's all I had.
Okay. And that is all we had on the agenda. Like, the menu, I'm obviously getting hungry. But I need a motion to go into non-public.
Can I, just one follow-up thing?
You guys don't need to stay. Nobody needs to stay.
One follow-up thing before we go into non-public? Thank you. From the task force, I didn't see in any of the materials what, if any, policies needed to be changed. So if people are aware of that, that would be helpful, otherwise I'm going to go pour through my policy book over the next few days, and we'll bring them forward in policy, but I want to make sure I don't miss any. So, that's all. Having said that, I move that we go into non-public under RSA 91A32B.
So moved.
Okay. I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. It has to be roll call. Are there any noes?
No noes. So Claffey, yes, Johnson, yes, Bishop, yes, Heather, yes, sorry, Raymond, yes, and Brown, yes. Thank you, guys. We are now in non-public at 7:56.